I want to thank everybody coming to the Board of Alderman Regular Meeting for the town of North Topsail Beach. Today is Wednesday, the 7th, and we're going to get started with our agenda. I am officially calling the meeting to order, so if everybody could please place their phones on silent or vibrate, I would appreciate that, and we are going to start with our invocation from Alderman Grant.
Bless this town and may it remain a beautiful and friendly place to live. We pray that this board makes fair and informed decisions this morning. We also pray that our police officers, firefighters, members of the armed services here and around the world remain safe as they risk so much for our security. We also pray that our town be spared the ravages of hurricanes and other natural disasters and that everyone associated with the town remains safe and secure. Amen.
And I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Protam Leonard for a moment of silence, please.
Yes, I'd like to offer a moment of silence this morning. Former Topsail Beach Mayor Howard Braxton was 84. He passed away last Sunday. He served the town of Topsail Beach four years as a board member and then another 16 years as the mayor. And his brother Frank is currently the mayor of Topsail Beach. So we offer our condolences to the family and to the town.
Thank you. And we're going to move into the Pledge of Allegiance.
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, in the ideal, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. So if we could have a first and a second, and then I'll see if there's any changes.
So moved.
Have a first, have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move right into the manager's report, so Ms. Darian.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. The first item is beach projects and operations. The Phase Four project, it is officially now completed. The contractor finished work, thank you. On April 24th, 219,925 cubic yards of sand was placed as part of the Phase Four project. Potential tropical cyclone number eight. On April 22nd, we published a work plan for the start of what we have been calling PTC Eight Dune Restoration Project. The work plan was a result of engineers' discussions with the contractor and the Division of Coastal Management for permitting. Work continued on Phase Four while the project was under further review by the state. On April 28th, the contractor started work in areas where little to no dune currently existed. These areas included just south of Marina Way, north of Barton Bay, one Topsail Dune structure, and a small section of Shipwatch Villas. These areas were determined by engineers to be the most vulnerable to flooding during storm systems with elevated wave and water levels. As we were starting the dune project, I started receiving inquiries concerning sandbags that were being installed along the Shipwatch property, along a small section. I did confirm with the state that they verified that they did receive a permit to do that work. I know that was a question a lot of people were asking. I also inquired if they were permitted to use the sand on the beach to fill the bags and was told that they were permitted to do that as well. I did ask our engineers to inquire further into the process with the state because it, in a sense, creates a deficit of sand on the beach and in the system that we're working hard to continually maintain and allocate money to. Once started, the Division of Coastal Management authorized a permit extension until May 9th this month. The contractors finished work on May 2nd for the season. I asked if we can continue working on the other areas since we have to revisit Shipwatch next season because of the sandbags, and we were not able to do that. The Division of Coastal Management requires updated surveys and plans prior to work in order to verify that the footprint hasn't changed at all and that we're, of course, working landward of the mean high water line. Only the critical dunes that were verified recently with surveys were part of that survey. So that is why we've completed the work for the season and we will pick back up again next season after turtle season. This project, of course, continues to move through the process with FEMA for potential reimbursement for obligation of funds. FEMA has recently submitted a series of engineering-related questions that Fran is working on at this time. I intend on going through the portal and respond to the list of questions next week. The cost share project for beach plannings, this is ongoing. We started this in May, and the project information is on our website. There's still time to sign up if any residents are interested in participating. It's for the purchase of sea oats or bitter panicum for the dunes. Delivery dates are here at Town Hall. May 9th, May 16th, May 30th, and June 13th is still available. The bike lane project. I received notice on Monday that the Division of Coastal Management acknowledged receipt of NCDOT's application for approval of the construction of the 5.4 miles of bicycle lanes adjacent to New River Inlet Road. The application was received and reviewed as completed. The projected deadline for making decision is June 29th, 2025. There also can be an additional 70-day review period, so they've cautioned us on that, and from April 15th. NCDOT may request a meeting with the Director of the Division of Coastal Management and a permit staff to discuss the status of the project once we hit April 15th. This 70 days from April 15th. The proposed project notice has also been placed on the town's website, Facebook page, and you could see the signs that have been posted along New River Inlet Road as well that was done by the state.
Does the board have any questions?
Allison, on that, will we be invited to that meeting, or is that just a meeting between the Division of Coastal Management and NCDOT?
That is between, the communications are between them right now at this stage. If there's, from that 75-day period, we can request a status at that time.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Grant?
Yeah, real quick, because it actually says May request, so we don't know if there's going to be a meeting or not. So, just real quick, on the sea oat stuff, we're doing the VITEX eradication. Is there any kind of, like, if we kill that stuff, is that going to?
No, I verified with the vendor, well, with Coastal Transplants, who we were working on that did the dashboard assessments of the VITEX. They said that that would not, you know, it would not hold up anything on dune plannings or complicate anything, that we could still continue with both as planned.
Okay, and then just one question, and not even a question. You've made it clear before. I'm not sure people understand KAMA's involvement in the bike lane. Somebody had posted, they thought, oh, they're spending our beach money on the bike lane. All KAMA's doing is issuing permits for an NCDOT project, correct?
Correct, yes. Because they have to review it because it's within the area of, it's on a state road in the area of environmental area of concern, so that has to be reviewed by that agency and they have to provide feedback.
And along that same lines, I think that there was some confusion on some things that I read earlier. Years ago, the town had put out a plan for review for a multi-use path.
Yes.
And that was one that we were not able to afford. It was one that Mr. Peters really wanted to move forward with, but at this point in time, as Alderman Grant mentioned, this is a DOT potential project where we're just trying to widen the shoulders similar to Island Drive to make it safer for pedestrians and bikers and folks to be on New River Inlet.
And as you pointed out before, it's a resurfacing project that they're doing that they might widen, they might widen the project to include a bike lane, which we then would be responsible for, the additional bike lane.
Yeah, we're trying to take.
And so it's an NCDOT resurfacing project with the potential for a bike lane.
Yeah, we're just trying to take advantage of a.
Bingo, yes.
Current project. Ms. Darian, I just had one question on the plantings for the areas of the dune where they were able to put some sand back up there. Will those also be planted this year, or is that something the homeowners should be looking at?
That will be a project that the board will consider next season.
Okay.
After turtle season.
Okay.
The intent is, once we get the dunes rebuilt, is to go in and do a sea oat project.
So if somebody.
That'll be a separate project, but we anticipate that coming before the board. And that has been submitted to FEMA for potential reimbursement as well as part of the project for $2.9 million.
But if some folks wanted to take advantage of the sea oats program now, they certainly could get started.
It's part of the cost share project as well.
They're not excluded, is what she's asking.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that side of the table? We're good?
Not for me.
Okay, then we're going to move on to the first open forum. Ms. Darian, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes. Fred Fontana, 1866 New River Inlet Road.
Good morning. Alice pretty much addressed most of what I was going to talk about, but I'm here to thank the board and the town and Alice for getting the dunes by Topsail Dunes rebuilt. Building one, for those who hadn't seen it, there was no dunes at all there. And any, on high tides, especially with king tides, the water was just going right underneath the buildings and that's all the air conditioning units are and so forth. So that sand is very much appreciated. I also was glad to hear about the KAMA permit process for the bike way. As you know, that was one of my pet projects. So anything that you guys can do to support it, any kind of state grant money you could pursue to get the local match for that, would be greatly appreciated, but keep pushing it, and I did see you have some money in the budget for this year. So thank you for your work on that project.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Rudy Walker, 115 Seagull Lane. Rusty Walker, I'm sorry.
Thank you for this opportunity to get up and address the board for public comments. I realize that the board does this, and any of the committees, when they meet, they offer the public the same opportunities to get up and speak and ask questions. The problem is, there is little or no time given for response, discussion, or action. There should be a time set aside at the current meeting or made part of the next meeting's agenda to discuss these matters. Right now, as it appears, the public comments fall on deaf ears. Either we're not being listened to or just being ignored. It has become clear to me that the best response is no response. Let the issue die in silence. There are issues that are important to residents that may or may not be important to the board members or the committee members. So if it's not important to me, then it doesn't matter and we don't need to discuss it. I'm asking that there be a time set aside to discuss these issues brought up during public comments. The next scheduled meeting may be the best way. Comments can be copied from the minutes and discussed, assigned to a committee or to a staff member to look into and determine an outcome. Please give us an answer. Don't disappoint us when we meet you on the street and ask, what is the board doing about such and such? And we get looked at, I don't know what you're talking about. I haven't heard anything about it. Don't embarrass yourselves. Be aware of what's going on and what the public is bringing to you because it is important. When folks work up the courage to get up here and stand and talk about an issue, they deserve answers and an explanation why the decision was made. Regardless of your decision, somebody's not going to be happy. You're going to make half the people ill when you make a decision. And just a few examples of things that keep coming up. The folks up down here on Osprey Lane would surely like the decision on what we're going to do about the speed limits. I'd like to see, and I've brought it up several times, beach act, public beach access is in the northern end of the beach, and I'm sure there are other areas. We need beach access. We're being very limited. I don't see Cameron here today, but Cameron would kind of like to know what's going to be done about the drainage at the end of his street when we have king tides and flooding down there. Simple things to address. Another question that keeps popping up is, what are we doing, what are the ordinances concerning loud music and partying late at night? Let us know where we stand. Give the public the courtesy of a response and a chance to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Terry Ward, 154 Ocean Lane.
Good morning. I just wanted to publicly thank you for, I know you have a lot of hard decisions and things to juggle, but I wanted to tell you that the people of Ocean Sound Village and Phase Four really appreciate you finishing that project. I know with PTC Eight and the lack of dunes that that was also a concern for the town. So we just really appreciate you working through that and finding a solution that at least was good for us and hopefully for everybody else. So thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Anyone else, Ms. Darian?
Jeffrey Wells, 2000 New River Inlet Road.
Good morning. I'm sure none of you have met me before. This is my first time coming and speaking, but I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. I've brought an issue to the board and to the town over several months since January about safety issues and concerns I have with the Topsail Dunes condominium complex roofs. They are right now between 38 and 40-plus years old. Despite being resurfaced, there's been constant evidence in roofing reports dating back over five years of structural integrity issues. It's been well documented. I submitted reports, a contractor's report from Randy Miller Construction with 30-years-plus experience stating his specific, after his inspection of the roof, issues with structural integrity and water pooling. Specifically, the roof is so sunken in that water pools and takes sometimes five, six days to evaporate. If I may, and show you. These were provided by a contractor who has not been paid or hired. It was completely voluntary at their own bequest. These are large images of the rage edges of the roofing with large amounts of water pooling on the roof. According to the roofing company and their drone footage, the water at any given point at this time it was measured could weigh between two and two-and-a-half metric tons. The water is several inches deep. A town inspector came out after numerous requests and having to get our U.S. representatives involved, and Inspector Strickland came out. He was able to come inside one unit and do a visual inspection of the roof from the inside of the unit. He was not able to physically get on the roof to do a proper inspection. He could not climb the ladder. I am not an ageist, but I believe he is 82-years-old, and he could not climb the 10-foot ladder and climb up onto the roof to do a visual inspection. Yet he submitted a report here that says that there's no evidence of structural sagging. There is evidence of water pounding up on the roof, but in his opinion, there's no present danger of collapsing. However, several inches of rain is a different story. I have hundreds of photos and multiple reports from roofing companies dating back five years, and they have been submitted to the entire town, the committee, all you Alderman members, that show that there are several inches in large areas covering sometimes 50 to 70 feet of the roof that are completely sunken in for days at a time. There's inspection reports on record that go back to 2017 that show that that roof has been opened up in the past and the roof, the plywood and the trusses 10 years ago were rotted out and replaced in places. I do not believe that that roof is safe and could handle another tropical storm season and hurricane season, and there is an imminent danger. And there are two roofing companies that have written and attested to this, along with a general contractor and other contractors that submitted their formal written statements as expert witnesses.
Sir, if you could please finalize or summarize?
I appreciate your time, that's all. Thank you for giving the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Alice, anybody else? Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak that didn't sign up? Okay, guys, in the audience, please. I understand. All right, so we are going to move on to public presentations and hearings. And the first one is the public hearing on the proposed 2025-2026 budget ordinance and fee schedule. And what I'd like to do is open it up to see if there's any public comment, anybody that would like to speak and first get a motion.
Just clarification. So we'll have a public hearing to take comments, and then we'll close the hearing, and then we'll have a discussion, correct? About things that we want to talk about in the budget. So, right, so the first is just to get comments and make it a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I need a motion to.
So we're not going to have a discussion during the hearing, is what.
No.
So moved.
So I have a motion, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there anyone that signed up for that, Alice, or is it just?
No, no, nobody has signed up.
Is there anybody that would like to speak during the public hearing on the proposed budget? Okay, then I would like a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, so we can have some board discussion on this. I have a couple notes down. Does anybody want to, does anybody else have any notes that they would like to bring up?
I do too.
All right, I'm going to let Laura start.
Go ahead.
Ricky, can you pull up the budget information? Okay.
Thank you.
So in reviewing the budget, I would like to make a motion or ask the board to look at moving $100,000 from general account 309901 to 371015. And this is for the rebuilds of crossovers that North Topsail Beach owns.
So Laura, to that end, just to clarify for everybody, and I want to make sure I have it right too, we're asking to take it out of contingency and put it up into a fund that would be specifically appropriated for beach crossover maintenance.
Correct. Currently, we have $40,000 in that fund, which only really can rebuild about two. I'm asking for the board to consider moving another 100 over as an encumbrance so that if we get the chance to rebuild more, it's in that account 371015 for the beach crossovers.
Thank you. Does, is any board comment on that request? Do we have, so what I'd like to do on each one is if we're going to direct staff to make that change, we want to go ahead and do that now. So do I have board concurrence to ask them to move those funds?
You mean consensus?
Consensus, yeah.
No.
We're good? No, you don't want to?
Okay.
Okay, so then I'm going to ask, Ms. Pladdell, do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So consensus is yes, is what you say?
So every, yes, everybody.
It's one no.
Yeah, one no.
Yep.
So is that clear, Alice?
Yes.
You're good? Okay. I just want to make sure as we go that we're being clear to the audience and also to staff. Go ahead, Rick.
All right, so obviously, being the numbers nerd, I've got a lot more comments than that. What I would like to do is, under the ordinances, I want to delete in its entirety, Section 12D, which says, "Contracts in excess of $100,000 shall be first approved by the Board of Alderman. The manager has authority for execution under that amount. The item must be budgeted and contained to finance officers pre-audit." One is, we currently have $40,000 in the budget, and it's frankly not about the limit. It's about what authority we should give to a town manager. It has nothing to do with Alice. And also to make sure that the right protocols are within that. For example, the general accepted way that we have been doing things is that every contract comes back to this board. All right, we then approve it and then it gets executed. There's no documentation that says that's the process. All right, and so those are the type of things that I think we need to give some thought to. And basically, table this, and then in our June meeting, be able to have a discussion or even, you know, discussion with council about what authority we want so we can draft up the right level of authority.
So you're asking this to just be removed?
Just be removed, not replaced with anything until we have a discussion.
Okay.
Do you want to go item by item, or do you want?
Yes, I would like. I would like to, just so that we're very clear. So I'm going to start with Mayor Protam.
Just so I understand. We're going to remove this for now. We're going to consult with council, and we're going to get this ironed out, and whatever verbiage we agree needs to be placed in there will be placed in there not, it will be placed in there. to be placed in there will be placed in there, not, it will be placed in there-
For the next fiscal year, yes.
By the June meeting.
Yes.
So that when, in June, we're ready, we're ready to approve this budget, it's, it's all, it's all done.
That's, the whole point is, is that we're gonna have to have another hearing, June anyway, because of some changes in the budget. All this is doing is, we currently have the forty thousand dollars through the end of this fiscal year. July first, we'll have to have some kind of ordinance in there that, that addresses this. So the answer is yes.
Well, just, everybody breathe for one second. We got a lot of hands going up. Counsel, in our conversation, I don't believe this line item has to be tied to the budget because it's an ordinance. So we can have the conversation as a board. We can make whatever modifications are appropriate, and that ordinance can go through the normal process of, of-
Yes.
Passing. But I, I do want to also say that there is, the reason the request was in there is because there has been some requests from board members to potentially increase the amount so that we can keep, like, the beach projects and other projects moving. So I think it is appropriate to have that offline conversation and make sure the board is all on the same page with them. I'm sorry, that was a lot out of me.
Yeah, this, passing an ordinance to delegate certain authority to the town manager to enter into certain contracts, you can have that as a section in your budget ordinance, or you can have it as a separate ordinance that has other processes.
Right.
But it does need to be by ordinance that the town board grants the manager what authority, what is the limit to enter into contracts.
Right.
But it doesn't have to be tied to the budget.
Okay.
Okay, so then I would like, go ahead, Laura, did you want to?
So my preference is that it is not tied to the budget, because granting authority shouldn't be tied to the budget, in my opinion.
Is, are, so Connie, are you okay with removing that line item for now and discussing as a board? Okay. Alderman Benson?
I'm opposed. I think it's fine the way it is.
Mayor Proton?
I agree to go ahead and do that.
Okay. Mrs. Shafsky?
Yes, I'm fine to remove it now.
And it was your item, so.
Obviously, I do.
Okay, so then we'll just strike that for now.
But I want to make a comment here.
Go ahead.
I want to go on the record and making sure it's clearly understood. It's clearly understood by everyone in this room. This has absolutely nothing to do with any level of trust that we have or don't have in our manager, okay? I want to make darn sure everyone understands that this is not about the person sitting at this table, but about the, the position. Because we have, I, I trust the manager explicitly. There are no questions about her integrity or anything about her, and this is not, this is not directed at her. This is directed at the position of the manager, not the individual filling the position now. And I can't over, I can't overstate that. Now I'm done.
Okay.
And that's exactly why I'm against changing what we already have.
Okay, then we, I believe you have what you need, right, Deborah? So I'm gonna move on, Rick, next item?
Yep, under GF seven of eighty-three.
Hold on, just a second. Deb, do you, do you have what you need, or I, I see a little bit of confusion over there.
What exactly are we removing from this?
You're just taking it out.
Section, section twelve-
Specifically twelve D is being-
Section twelve D, the consensus was to remove section twelve D of the budget ordinance to either have an amendment that puts in there or a separate ordinance after account, after board discussion.
Right.
Okay, Deborah, you got it?
Okay.
Thank you, Connie.
Seven of eighty-three. Hang a second, just to make sure I got the right change. All right, so, under this, this is, this relates to legal services. And consistent with that change, I'm gonna suggest in a minute, under the, where it says ten dash four, ten dash forty-seven, counsel, no offense on this one, we've got fifty thousand dollars for extra services for Seminole SUG. I would like to delete the word Seminole SUG, extra services, and just put legal services in there because we do not have a contract with Seminole SUGs for the fifty thousand dollars that's in here, okay? And so you can't name somebody in a budget that we don't have. The contract we have with them is a not-to-exceed contract, which is already included in here. So it's more wording, it's not taking the money out. It's just saying, since we don't have a contract, we can't put something in here for a contract for, in, a law firm. That's consistent with what you've told us before.
And just to, you know, I think just to add, you know, comments to this, I do think it's appropriate when you have your budget ordinance, unless you have, you know, particular professional service that you've already contracted with, you put that vendor in. If you don't, then you can budget the money in a general category without specifically designating that vendor. For instance, if for some reason you had to have conflict counsel or pay a different counsel for a litigation matter, or something to that effect, you have it budgeted in there so that you're able to use it in the next fiscal year. So I do think that's appropriate.
And as you advised me on this one, very simply is, if we wanted to engage you for fifty thousand dollars, we'd have to amend your contract and bring it back here.
So are we just changing it to say financial?
Just changing legal services, yeah.
Legal services, okay.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a net, but it's because we don't have contracts in place. If you go to GF fourteen, I'm sorry, do you want to do a consensus on this one?
Is everybody in agreement on that? Any, any concern?
No.
Okay, we're good.
On GF fourteen, it's the same issue relating to our accounting firm, GWI. We have in here under contracted services for GWI, we've, under ten dash four-two-zero dash forty-five, we've got money in here for them. We do not have a contract with GWI that goes beyond this month. And so I would change that basically to accounting and financial services as the tag, not changing the amount, just changing the name, to reflect the fact we do not have a contract.
So same, same comment as legal services?
Same comment, it's the same, yeah. It's just cleaning this up after having discussions with what we need to have in the budget and not have in the budget.
Any concern from the board? Okay.
Okay, next.
Let's see. I think we talked about, the last meeting, we had taken a vehicle out of the police budget and put it into contingency. I would like to put, and again, this starts with, my understanding of our budget process is approving the budget does not approve specific expenditures. So I would suggest we, and it was my suggestion last time, to move into contingencies, we had it there. Given the fact we have a limit on contingency, I think we need to put that back in the police budget with the understanding that we're looking at one vehicle, but there would be a, an amount in there if we needed, if it was an accident or whatever, but I think it's got to go back into there and out of contingency. So that we're, we're tracking it per discussions with Trey as to how we're gonna do those type of things. Again, it doesn't change anything except it, and again, it doesn't say we're approving two police vehicles. It says that we are allocating money in there for those type of things, and the number of vehicles to be determined later.
Any comment?
So essentially, we're encumbering funds for-
That's the issue.
We're encumbering funds for a future need.
Right, right. Because keep in mind, it's, it's been explained to me, if it sits in contingency, okay, we would have to have a board action to take the money out of contingency for a specific expense. And we'd have to go through that process for everything, versus if it's in, if it's in that budget and it's made the decision to move forward because we have an accident or something, we can do that within the budget process.
The contingency is, there's a threshold, percentage threshold on the contingency. Okay, and that's what we're trying to fix here.
Right.
Is we've got too much money right now in the contingency, correct?
So I think-
We're hitting, we're hitting real, real close.
So under state statute, your contingency funds can only be five percent of appropriations from a specific fund. In this case, it's the general fund. And so when you have the, you know, contingency reserve line items, the way they are, I think you're getting closer over. And so it is appropriating the funds to the line items that you had already made the policy choice. So for, in this example, a police vehicle or two police vehicles would go into the vehicle line item for law enforcement services. You've appropriated the funds. Well, then the next step, if you wanted to expend them, would be to enter into a contract, but still, over forty thousand dollars is going to require board approval. So the board still has the ability to, you know, agree to the contract to expend the already appropriated funds, but it's just moving out of contingency to meet that threshold issue. Yes, sir.
As long as we move forward with the understanding, clear understanding by everyone in the room that we have approved one new vehicle for the year, and we're putting this one in, in the, in the event that we have, we have some unforeseen need for a second vehicle.
Well, but technically, that's not even true, because until they bring us the contract for the one, we haven't even approved that vehicle.
Okay.
Correct, correct?
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any additional comments?
It's all good.
Okay. All right, does anybody else in the room have any comments on the budget? Okay. Alice and Deborah, are you comfortable?
I do.
Okay, please.
I am really pleased with this budget. I'm glad that although expenses continue to rise, we've held the, we've held the tax rate at the same level. We are not raising taxes. We have a nice contingency fund, in case, heaven forbid, we have any, any natural disasters or issues this year, and I'm really pleased with it. I want to thank Alice and Deb and the whole staff. Thank you.
And that's the only thing I was gonna add, was I sincerely appreciate all the time and effort that you ladies have put into this budget, working with the department heads and all of the work sessions that you've had to sit through with us board members. So we definitely do appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, now, do we have Fran, Ricky?
Hello, yes.
There's Fran. So we're gonna move on to our coastal engineer report with Mr. Way. How are you, Fran?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. It's up to, it's all you.
Okay, are you sharing my screen? Here we have the coastal update for the month of May, twenty-twenty-five. The first slide, just an overview of the, the five phases or reaches of the beach, starting with phase one up near New River Inlet, going down to phase five, reach five, in, on the town limit of Surf City. As you can see here, all these lines represent either recent nourishment projects or planned nourishment projects. And pretty much, the, the entire shoreline is, is getting, has recently had work or is going to get work. And we'll go over these projects individually here on different, on the following slides. This was the, the core navigation dredging and placement project up in phase one, north of the Topsail Reef condos. They placed seventy-seven thousand cubic yards of material. You know, it, it's, it's finer, beach compatible material, but you know, it's, it's, it's good material. I think any material is, is, is helpful. This project sometimes can put about twice this volume out here, but it is, it's all dependent on the, the volume to be dredged along the intercoastal waterway up here, and even the channels to Jacksonville. This is the completed FEMA mitigation project in phase five. This was, the, the project held up well to PTC eight and other recent storms. And we, we just continue to monitor it. We'll do annual monitoring here. The town does annual monitoring usually in June or July, just before hurricane season. So we have a good, you know, pre-project, precondition survey, in, just in case any major storms do come through, and we, we have to kind of figure out how much damage was sustained. Here's the, the completed state grant in phase four, reach four. And Alice did a great job of kind of really going over all the projects, but, so I'm just kind of repeating what she said. But this is the, the, basically about two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand cubic yards of material over about two and a half miles. The, the truck accesses were on either side. This is another image of the aerial image of, of really kind of the, the template. And we kind of updated this daily, and you can see the little dates here on, you know, the, the days they worked. Here's an image of the, the, the process of the Jeffries Beach Access. And then this is kind of the center of the nourishment, following the nourishment. And you can see it's, it's a nice big beach. This material is, is beach compatible. It's, it's slightly on the coarser side, beach compatible, and that's actually better. It can hold up a little bit better. Material's great, the color. And yeah, we, we do really like the coarseness for the, the beach nourishment for that, and it does perform a little better against storms and wave activity. And then we did, you know, lots of KAMA, and the Army Corps of Engineers, you know, requires us to, to test the data and to look at the grain size, and that's how we know that it is that good, coarse, beach compatible material. This is the disposal area one forty-three. This is the, a major project that is planned for phases one through three. And it's, you know, between two and, two and a half million cubic yards of material over five miles. And this, this would be almost double the, the largest nourishment project that the town has ever done. The largest one was back in two thousand and fifteen at, at, with the, the phase five project. And this is, this is almost double that volume. So this is, this is a major nourishment. I did talk with Chris Gibson this morning, and he's, he's just trying to arrange the, the pre-application meeting to kind of really get this in front of the, the regulators and get this, this project moving. Alice did a good job to, kind of on this one, but this is potential tropical cyclone eight. And then the FEMA did, you know, ask for more analysis from us. This is just some of the overview of when PTC eight, September sixteen, twenty, twenty-twenty-four. This is just some images. Here's an image of just a, basically this, this hatch area, this is the, the dune that was lost during PTC eight. So, you know, that, and that's why, you know, FEMA did get involved with this, and, and there was, there was some, the dune did sustain some damage. FEMA is, just to be clear, and we talked about this last month, but it, it's not, the, the FEMA losses is not just based on dune erosion, but it's based on calculations on a five-year storm run-up and erosion analysis. And so it's almost like, you know, FEMA does their one-hundred-year storm analysis for the, their FEMA, FEMA flood maps that everyone knows about. But it's almost like we have to do the exact same analysis, but for a five-year storm, not a hundred-year storm. It, it, it's, it's quite a bit of work. And we're, we're working through that now. It's a transect by transect analysis. And it's really about the, we're trying to establish it. It's benefits versus costs, and that really does seem where it is. And then we had the cost of the dune project, and now we, we're trying to establish the, the benefits outweigh the costs. And that's kind of where we are. You know, FEMA is kind of in flux nowadays, but it, it does seem like this, you know, we have, nothing major has occurred yet that, that would change the path forward. But here's another image of the erosion due to PTC eight. And then here, you know, and this is one of the transects that where this, this dune system would, would not, would not withhold, would not stand up for a five-year FEMA storm. All right, here's another one. These are some of the areas, the critical dune areas up near Marina Way and near the, the Garden Bay. This was some of the critical dune restoration that we did here that Alice mentioned, that just, you know, last week. It was about eight thousand cubic yards of material, and basically it was in areas where we saw that the, the dune was not going to hold up to elevated wave and water levels. And I mean, the board does rem, it's similar to what was happening in Ansel County, Beach Access Four, where, you know, anytime there was just elevated king tides and waves, that flooding was getting through that dune gap onto New River Inlet Road, and even getting, you know, beyond it into the park, and just, just causing all sorts of damage and, and inconvenience. And we didn't, we did not want that. So we did get in there, and it was great that SD Wooten did, didn't get these, these, these areas restored prior to hurricane season. As Alice mentioned, the, the KAMA did get a little bit, they got their wires crossed with the, the Shipwatch Villas dune area, where we, we had an area of that dune to be restored. And, but then, you know, a few days earlier, the, the Shipwatch put in sandbags. And the sandbags, and with those sandbags, we could not get, put any additional sand in there without, without, you know, potentially damaging those bags. So we could not do that, the work in that area, but it does have sandbags. And I am following up with, as, as Alice mentioned- And I am following up with, as, as Alice mentioned, about using sand from the beach to fill the bags. That, that is a, you know, a departure from what they have been requiring, even up on the Topsail Reef condos and the other areas. And obviously, the Topsail Reef condos, that's, that's a, a more substantial sandbag for that. But at the same time, it, it is a departure from what they usually require. They are still trying to get back to me on that. And the CRC meeting was last week, and they, they were all up there. So, I should hear back from them today on that. Here is the, the Northern Shoreline Dune Restoration Project. And this is, you know, the contract that awarded and planned for this November. And it is, you know, basically, as soon as you get off to the island, phase three, phase two, phase one, all these areas. And, you know, this will just help to restore that dune. And then we also have the DA one forty-three project, you know, after this. So, hopefully, this can keep this area, you know, sustained prior to getting that major nourishment from the DA one forty-three nourishment. Just to update everything, the, the core project of on phase one, it's, 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 you know, good sand, seventy-seven thousand cubic yards of material. We have a New River Inlet Management Master Plan. The final sections of the DEIS are under the core review. I have not, I've reached out earlier this week to dial Cordy for any updates, but I haven't heard back from them yet. And I, I will pass them along if I hear them. The state grant nourishment was completed. And then the PTC eight, we, we continue with the, the FEMA coordination and, you know, doing all the things that they need us to do in order to qualify for that. And then DA one forty-three, the, the pre-appel, application permit meeting is trying to get scheduled right now, in the next few weeks probably. And then I'll just continue working with the North Topsail Beach, the, the Finance Officer, DEUC Associates, Deborah, in terms of trying to get all, all the FEMA funding and state funding projects, you know, keep them, all the reimbursement process moving quickly, as quickly as possible. And then, you know, grant coordination and permit coordination for all the projects. So, and that, that is my update.
Thank you Fran. I'm going to ask the board if anybody has any questions for Fran. We'll start with Alderman Benton.
Come back to me in a second.
Okay. Mayor Proton Leonard.
I don't have anything.
Okay. We have a question. Okay, back to you.
Oh, I do, I remember now. Sorry, folks. Fran, the pre-application meeting, is that same as a one-stop meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, because Chris has, Chris has explained it to us more as what he calls a one-stop meeting. And it sounds like it brings all the permitting agencies together at one time to go through the, the plan and give any feedback they have to what's being presented to the agencies.
Yes, yes. Prior to the official submittal of the permit application, you know, they, they bring it up. Sometimes, I, I call it a pre-application permit. And then the regulator, the Clean Water Act, has some other regulations on you do need to have a pre-application meeting. I do think that was changed recently. But yeah, the, the one-stop really kind of brings it into focus, brings the project in focus and lets, you know, gives you an idea of the areas of, that of concern that, that the agencies may have.
Thank you Fran. Appreciate your time today.
Okay.
Okay. The next item is the consent agenda. I would like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Then we are going to move on to continuing business. And this is Alderman Grant's item. And Ms. Beth Wood is here from GWI, so thank you for coming. And we're just going to talk about a status report on the G, with GWI on issues outlined in their contract.
I think your mic is on, so you should be good.
Good morning, afternoon, wherever we are in this daytime. So, anyway, I appreciate Mayor and Alderman the ability to talk about the work that we've done for North Topsail Beach. And again, just appreciate the opportunity to work with you. I have before you just a summarization of what we've done so far, where we are within the contract, and then sort of what's left to do within the next thirty days. Also acknowledging the fact that with your approval, if needed, we can work one more month after the May deadline. Sure.
What were we supposed to get? Was it one page?
Sure.
Okay, because there's some other stuff here in that stack.
Oh, gotcha.
All right.
We got it.
That's why the fumbling here.
That's okay.
Sorry about that.
Rhymes with bumbling and mumbling, but we won't go there.
We're ready.
So, again, up top is the summarization of, of what we've done and what the charges are so far. This includes what invoices have been paid, and then an invoice that is going to be coming here in the near future for approximately seventy-three thousand dollars. So, that, the invoices that have been paid plus what's coming is in all of the one-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, five-seventeen. You see some mileage there. And our contract amount was two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand. You have a hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars left over for the next thirty to sixty days, depending on what you decide. Couple of things I wanted to just sort of point out. The biggest item on the list is your budget, the fifty-three thousand dollars. I just want to note that that is fiscal year twenty-five and all the preparation for fiscal year twenty-six. There has been budget amendments, budget resolutions that have been prepared by Deborah Mack. Also, there are a lot of questions. Department heads, people don't know where to charge certain invoices and certain expenditures and what budget line item it goes to. So, Deborah Mack is answering these questions every day. And so, again, that's where sort of the twenty-five charges come from, as well as the twenty-six. And we've probably got well over twenty thousand dollars of the fifty-three is based and charged to fiscal year twenty-five budget. The FEMA and, and DEQ, the DEQ money, and this was more about untangling federal and state grants and getting them into the right fund and the right account. Now, Deborah Mack has found issues as far back as fiscal year twenty-one with Hurricanes Florence and Dorian. There have been expenditures charged in the wrong fund, as well as expenditures charged to the wrong line item. So, she's prepared a list of invoices that she has sent to Fran to help her sort of figure out where the appropriate. FEMA is ready to close some projects, but certainly you don't want to close them until you're sure that the appropriate expenditures for whatever phase and their money, that it all matches up. DEQ, when we got here, the DEQ money had been spent, but all that got fixed. But there's been no DEQ project at the time. So, the DEQ money, the ten-point-five million, we've had our arms around that. Deborah Mack's had her arms around that. And so, the expenditures that are coming from that are being watched carefully, and I'm not real worried about those monies ending up in the wrong account or the wrong fund. It's the FEMA money that is going to have to be teased out. Now, Deborah Mack has, and I got a to-be-determined note here as far as when you can expect this to be finished. Conversations with FEMA have been halted. While we are dealing with Fran, and, and he is able to help, there will need to be conversations with FEMA to be able to tease out and put these things in the right place. But as all of you are aware of, the conversations with FEMA have been stopped. And so, until Deborah Mack has the ability to talk to them again, this part of that project has been put on hold. And I just want to jump back up to the budget item. The date that I've put on there for that to be completed is six-thirty, twenty twenty-five. You want to adopt your budget till around six-four. And then, this whole workbook that you have on your budget, your software, accounting software is not such that you can just upload or download your budget. Your budget is going to have to be every number manually keyed. And then somebody will have to go behind that person and proof. And so, you don't even want to start entering any numbers until you've satisfied on your budget, you've adopted your budget. And so, again, that's why the date of six-thirty. So, whether it's us or somebody else, somebody's going to have to key those numbers in, and somebody else is going to have to prove them. The firefighter grant, that's been completed. Everything that needed to be teased out and worked on has been done there. Your accounts payable, the issues with accounts payable, you are up to date pretty much on most of your accounts payable. Obviously, that is an ongoing process. Bills have to be paid, checks have to be written. But things like, there are a lot of things that have been entered into the accounting system incorrectly. Those have been backed out, put in correctly. You had something like seventy credit memos from a vendor that nobody had used. When the GWI staff tried to use them against the invoices that were coming in the door, your software didn't like how this was being handled. So, the seventy credit memos had to be pulled out and re-entered three times. A lot of conversations spent on the phone with your software company. But again, eventually, we got there, and the town is able to make use of, of those seventy credit memos. There's still some, how do I want to say it, rough spots. It, it's not as smooth and as fast as it can be. Again, digitizing invoices is critical. Purchase orders being set up so that when an invoice comes in, that purchase order notes what account number this invoice should be charged to. And right now, there is nothing really on the invoice that sort of says phase three or, you know, that sort of leads you into knowing where to, to charge this. So, then, the accounts payable person's sort of putting out to several different people, who knows about this invoice? And then it comes back, and then it has to be saved. And then, you have to send it back out for an approval. They don't keep it in the same format and file that it was sent to them in, so it comes back and you have to research it again. So, again, that process is not as smooth as it could be. So, you should see accounts payable expenditures, the, the ability to, to write the checks and do the invoices. You should see that coming down once that process smoothes, smoothes out a little better. The bank reconciliation process is, is pretty smooth now. All the bank reconciliations for all seven bank accounts are caught up. They are up to date. Again, another process that will be continuing. But all the work that had to be done to catch it up and get it straight is pretty much done. And so, this is sort of a routine moving forward. I had the staff start putting in, in February, the things that, the time they were spending because of some of the finance department's lack of knowledge or whatever, but things that they would do that would cause GWI staff to have to fix. Fixing was not just simple. You had to back out everything, excuse me, everything that was done, and then re-enter it, and then move on. So, we started in February, and that's what that fixes and duplicate work is about, just so that you could sort of track and know some of the things that GWI staff was up against without bearing it into these other categories that inflates them because it really wasn't what took to get that job done. It was backing stuff out, putting stuff back in. But again, we only started this in February, so there's several months that doesn't have these numbers in there. Your tax and reporting prep, your ten-ninety-nines, your, your W-two's, I'm sorry, your ten-ninety-nines, that number should be a lot less in January of twenty twenty-six because again, your ten-ninety-nines had not been prepared and distributed since twenty twenty-one. So, again, it was a lot of research, trying to figure out, get the right information so that the ten-ninety-nines could be submitted. So, again, you'll see, that number should go down significantly. And then we had other things that we stepped into or ran into that had to be fixed. Fire station number two, again, there were expenditures, there were problems with where things were being charged. And so, that was cleaned up. And there were some issues with your fund balances not being correct. And Deborah Mack did work to get those straightened out. So, that's, at the bottom is a list of your other categories. So, if, that's the end of my presentation. If there's any questions that you would like to ask me, Deborah Mack and I are available.
I have one simple one. It sounds like you all have done a ton of work. Thank you, Deborah, in discovering some of our process-related items that need to be fixed. So, moving forward, we're on the right path. And I'm just wanting to make sure that those processes, whenever that occurs, that those get documented. So, whenever we are able to fill our financial officer position, they're not having to relearn or rediscover those.
We have not done that yet.
Okay. Is that something you can do for us?
Absolutely. And, and, but it won't be something as simple, something as complicated as open this screen.
Yeah.
Click on this. That is extremely. But to say, when a contract gets signed, a purchase order gets created, on this purchase order, there will be the account numbers. And then, when the invoice comes in against that purchase order, then department head, you know, will have to approve. No invoices will be paid. I mean, so that list of processes can be documented. The procedures, again, clicking on this screen.
Yeah, no, no, no. I'm looking for the, the, at the level that you had just described. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks. I live in the world, if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. So, thank you for your verbal, but you've got twelve items in your contract. Okay? Can we get, what you've, each, each one of these, and a lot of the stuff you hit, for example, the first one's reviewing and rise FEMA grants. If it's cleaned up, then going forward, it should be a completely different process. Right? I mean, a lot of the stuff that's gone up. I haven't heard anybody say any money's missing or anything like that. It's just about it went in the wrong account or whatever. So, having put that aside, you've got twelve action items here that are supposed to be done by the end of the month. And so, I would appreciate it to get a written, this is what we did, not just where the money was spent.
Sure.
But for, you know, for, for example, is, and it's nitpicking, yes. And you talked about bank reconciliations. All right. Bank reconciliations on here, we spent fifteen thousand dollars. Your original contract said you'd do those for six months for eighty-four hundred dollars. My guess is, going forward, it's going to be the eighty-four hundred dollars for six months, not the fifteen. So, and, and so I'm sure that you would come back and say, we did all the back reconciliations back X number of years. Going forward, they're cleaned up. Going forward, because bank reconciliation is done once a month for those accounts, and then you're done. Right? So, if it's cleaned up, the process going forward. So, it would be helpful to say, here's what we did, here's what we fixed going forward, because there's a lot of these things that you just went over that are not going to be continuing items next year. So, when we're looking at whether it's you or somebody else continuing with some of these services, particularly with us not having a financial officer in here, it would be very helpful, I think, to have that kind of report for us.
Sure.
So, if that's the consensus, I mean, I think we have to have something in writing in terms of that, not just a verbal report, in terms of the things that have been done. The other question, this is more of a structural issue. Deborah does a very good job, in my opinion, on putting the budget together with one thing that scares me, and that is, it's your program that you use to get it done. She was going to share the information with me if, if, no offense. If Deborah gets hit by a car tomorrow, who's going to support that software system for us to be able to do our budget?
It's really not a software system, it's an Excel spreadsheet.
Right, but it's her spreadsheet.
Sure.
My point is, if it's not supportable, because honestly, whether I agree with everything in the budget or not, this is the most complete and detailed budget I've ever seen in this town, and more than I'm used to seeing. And so, you know, thank you for that. But again, you know, we've been through this type of thing, and I think what you're telling us is, we did a bunch of cleanup over the last six months. Okay? Just to get things to run smoothly, particularly with a new finance person coming in. Going forward, you were spending this, you're probably going to spend this. But those processes are going to have to continue in getting them documented. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes.
Okay.
And, well, I was just going to say that we will certainly... And, well, I was just going to say that we will certainly leave someone with the ability to use that Excel spreadsheet. Because again, a lot of things are, you go into the spreadsheet, you put your information in, and it rolls forward, and it looks more complicated than.
Yeah, I'm assuming if we brought in a financial person today, okay, somebody's going to have to educate them. It's not going to be, you know, here's my, you know, I sent you all my files, I'm going on vacation for six months, it's probably not the transition Deborah was looking at for something like that. So, I mean, I'm fine with that. And I think that going back, like the Carter's we used to use, to do a lot of financial stuff, the town got rid of them. And to me, we have to keep assets out there that help us going forward. You know, it doesn't mean we have to spend this, but you've got to have access to capacity capability and stuff for just what we ran into, which is the, you know, we lost our financial person, so.
And.
So at the end of the day, Deborah, and so are we going to get a thumb drive with the final spreadsheet for our, you know, our budget? Yes. Can we get that?
She sent it to us.
Right now, you have PDF documents that I assembled and the whole entire Excel file. I have a North Topsail Beach file server where we keep on our server because we know it's super secure, right?
Right.
And not, that's nothing negative about the town, but our resources to keep.
No, I understand that.
So everything that I've done is underneath the town of North Topsail. And so that, as we get stuff finished.
Right.
It gets moved over to your server, and there's a copy dropped right in there. Your bank recons are getting moved over. But we keep the main working documents over there in case.
No, I get that, but we will have a copy of the final.
We pay for it, so it's our property, is what you're saying.
Right. Okay, thank you.
The, one thing that I just do want to bring up though, so as I said, the accounts payable process is not as smooth. I'm not sure how much that number's going to go down moving forward. When you put a purchase order into the software that you have and you try to pay an invoice less than that purchase order, it doesn't like it. So then you have to do a workaround and remove, so. And then again, I've asked Alice's permission and I've instructed Deborah Mack to send back invoices that not are, that are not appropriately approved, that don't have the information on it. Because again, to think that your finance officer understands where to charge these invoices, what line item expense account to put them in is really unrealistic. And it is up to the department heads who own these budgets to say, this is where it's supposed to go, because they're the ones that are responsible for those budgets. But the cooperation for getting these invoices back to accounts payable has not been what it should be. So again, further instruction to Deborah Mack to start, you know, if I send you a file and I've already got it set up so I can just slip it into the accounts payable system, if you send it back to me in any other way than what I sent it to you and I have to do all this work and saving and whatever, then send it back again, which will hold up invoices being paid. But your department heads have got to get on board with digitalization and understanding that this file was sent to you named a certain way so that we can find the invoice and get it paid just like that. But you sent it back with some random name on this file, and then we have to go research it again. It is putting hours and hours and hours. And then again, the other thing is your software system. It is, so, so we work with this particular software company a lot, and I've met with their representatives, and they're a small shop and they have no intention of upgrading and being in the cloud, so I'm not sure how much longer you may want to hang around with them. There are many accounting softwares out there, and I have seen upgrades and versions, you know, and so everybody's kind of looking at what problems are you having. Deborah Mack has been on the phone and told them about the report issues, things that don't tie, things that don't work, and she's got nowhere with any fixes, they say. We'll tell programming, but nothing ever happens that we see, here's an upgrade, this has been fixed, this has been handled. And even to the point where I've been with clients and I have seen that two reports run for the same data gives you two different numbers. And again, on the phone with the software company, we'll get with programming, it never changes. And I just, I just want to bring that up. I don't mean to be denigrating this particular software company, I'm just saying, it's not keeping up with the times. As y'all know, data is critical, and the more technology can make things go smoother and faster, and just the fact that you would have some methodology to upload this budget and not have somebody key and key and key and key, and then somebody to proof it all. Again, they're just, but, but the credit memos did not work well. The budget upload is not there. If you try to enter an invoice for a purchase, against a purchase order that is not the same amount, it doesn't like those and it won't handle it. It doesn't handle sales tax always like it should, so you have to keep your eye on that. It would be nice to have something that is more user-friendly so that you're not having to monitor these things and you can go about and do other business of the town. So just want to throw that out there. Software transition is tough. It is tough, but I'm just not so sure how long, as many projects as you have, as much money as you spend, as many different things as you have going on in this town, I'm just not sure how much longer this software is going to support all the things that this town has going on.
Just a process question, because now I'm confused. I look at Deborah as the managing partner of our thing. The work you just described is clerk work that she then supervises. Reviewing, what you just talked about, is you pay a clerk to do that. You don't pay the partner. We don't, you know, Beth doesn't come in to review payables for us. She's the overseer to make sure if there's a problem, she's the problem handler, not the detailed stuff, because you don't pay partner for clerk work. So, I mean, and you've got both of those, you know, in our, which is fine, but is, I don't understand the process you described, because you can't have one person doing all this, because something happens to her, we've got a problem.
The, the issue that I guess.
And so one is a clerk and one is, one is a partner.
And, and I run into this all the time, and it gets into my lap also. I have people that are doing things and it won't work. So then you have to elevate the issue to somebody like Deborah Mack.
And that's what I see her as. I mean, she's basically the failsafe in the process.
But she's stepping in, she's the one, the clerk can't talk to the software company. Deborah Mack understands the details and talks to.
But the clerk can review every invoice that comes in and type back.
But I think we're getting into too much detail, Alderman Grant. I think we're getting into the day-to-day operations, and I don't think that that is the.
It's spending the town's money, Mayor, okay? That's what I'm talking about, it's spending the town's money.
But you're getting into the day-to-day operational aspects of the town.
She brought up how she processes it, and I asked her quite.
She brought up the issues that.
No, she brought up how they handle the issue. And all I asked her is how you handle the issue, that's all.
Well, and again.
I think it's time to move on.
Well, I'm just going to say that.
That's not your call, Tom, sorry.
That Sylvia, that our AP person is running these issues to Deborah Mack.
That's my question.
And then she is handling them. She is the one that, has the knowledge to talk with the software company.
She's the interface with the outside people.
The, your accounts payable person, that's G W I staff, does not.
Okay, that's fine.
So we, I think as a board, could you turn yours off?
Oh, sorry.
As a board, I think we recognize the issue we have with our software, and without a finance director, it's difficult right now to decide to change that software. Some of us on the board have done many accounting, financial conversions and understand that. I am concerned about our SLAs with the current vendor, and I do think that's something we can look into, to your point, if we're not getting the right response and review the current contract that we have for the software. So hopefully, we can put some pressure on them as well, because you as our vendor, as a contractor to us, shouldn't be the only one putting that pressure on a contract we have for our existing software.
And the other thing, I guess I would say to that is, while you would expect some of these numbers to come down, because we have cleaned up a lot of stuff, there are still some things, workarounds that have to be done that will keep this number from coming down to where it could.
Right, and we.
It's a transition, that's fine.
Yes.
I wouldn't finish. So we understand that, because we understand the software is klugey, so we get it. And we do appreciate your efforts in regards to resolving those issues. But I understand when you have klugey stuff, it's a klugey process, and it's not going to change until the software changes. Thank you.
And the only thing I wanted to add to that was, I do believe we have funds in the budget for once we have a finance officer that what Deborah and Laura had talked about in the budget workshops is allowing them to select the software that they would like to use moving forward.
Now you know why I changed the title. The Finance and Account Services.
And, yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
May I just say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
So we have seen software conversions happen, and some of them are going through the league of municipalities. What we have seen are vendors who are promising to make sure that all of your numbers out of your old system made it into the new system, and they look exactly like they're supposed to, they're not following up. And so once you get them in there, and then the staff are having problems, the vendor's gone away because they've done the convert. So again, when you do your contract, and that's going to be down the road probably a year or so, I just want to put that out there for you to make sure in the contract that they are tight on, they have to make sure that what was in the old system comes across to the new system, and when you put your information out, it falls out the same way. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Some of us, having worked in IT for thirty-five years, understand that there's nothing magic and seamless, and we certainly will know well how to write that contract. But I appreciate those comments, because I've been on both sides. I've been the software vendor and I've been the customer. And so if you don't have SLAs and you don't have all that determined in the contract, they're going to come in, slam that conversion in and walk away, and we're not going to allow that to happen.
When they convert then, I do hope you're still on the board, because again, people could get talked into things that, I mean, if you don't know and you haven't had that experience with it, then you won't know what they're talking you into. So the fact that you've been on both sides of this is going to be very helpful to the town.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to Mayor Protem's Washington DC legislative update.
Okay, completely shifting gears here. Last week, the mayor, the manager and I went to Washington as part of a larger group from the Topsail Island Shoreline Protection Commission to visit with our federal elected officials. The trip almost didn't go. We all were, everyone was on the same flight leaving Wilmington on Sunday afternoon that kept getting delayed, and finally at about eleven o'clock that night, they said, gee, we're out of crew hours now that we've got the plane fixed. And we all got to come back the next day at nine o'clock, which meant we got to travel in suits and ties and stuff. But the original schedule, we were able to salvage all of it except for the first meeting, which we were able to move to Wednesday morning. So we got to see and talk to everybody who was on the list. Next slide, please, Ricky. These were the trip objectives, not for the Shoreline Protection Commission, but for our town. Shoreline Protection Commission added, I think, Alice, if you remember probably better than I, I think the only thing missing here is the stuff that dealt with the federal project from Surf City. So those are, they're there, I can read them, but y'all can read them too. The big issue for us is the Cobra bill. It's House Resolution one eight eight five was filed by Congressman Murphy and co-sponsored by Congressman Rousier on the fifth of last month, and the same day it was referred to the House Committee on Natural Resources. But our big issues were to try to get, to continue working on that, to get some support on the Senate side for both the Cobra bill that's in the House and for a companion bill to go to hopefully track parallel. We talked some about continued funding for the two inlets from the Corps of Engineers, funding at the federal level, and then, and then talked about FEMA island-wide disaster Next slide, please. Monday, first person we saw was from a key member of Senator Tillis's staff. We talked about, again, the Cobra bill and about the possibility of getting companion Senate legislation, and we secured support for both of those. He stated he would talk to the senator about sponsoring a bill on the Senate side, keeping in mind that back in twenty nineteen, Senator Tillis did sponsor a Senate Cobra relief bill for us. It would mirror the bill that we have right now in front of Congress in terms of what it does and, and all the parameters. We also talked again about the same two things, the money for the cleaning out the channels, and then the, the other thing we talked about was the use of Cobra zone sand outside the Cobra area, which is a bigger issue, I presume, down in Topsail Beach than it is here. Following Senator Tillis's meeting, we met with Corps of Engineers. Much of that was obviously spent talking, Surf City talking about their federal project, and when they were going to get their chief's report done, which will then at some point allow them to start putting sand on the beach there, hoping by the end of the year. Next, we saw the House Committee Staff on Natural Resources Subcommittee on Water, Wildlife and Fisheries, talked again about what the next step is for our Cobra bill, because this is where it starts, starts in the House Natural Resources Subcommittee on Water, Wildlife and Fisheries. There will be a subcommittee hearing on the twentieth of May at ten fifteen AM back up there, and I will be expected to testify as I did back in September of twenty-three. Tuesday, saw the House Transportation Infrastructure Committee Subcommittee on Water Resources and Environment, again, about New River and New Topsail Inlet dredging and use of sand and the Surf City project. Following that, we met with Congressman Rousier and his staff. We expressed our appreciation for his cosponsorship and continued support of our Cobra efforts, and the remainder is there. We spoke about the same stuff with everyone we saw. What was different was, depending on who it was, what order we went. And mostly, we went first about our Cobra issue, particularly with our two senators and with our congressman, Congressman Murphy, which, next slide, please. We saw Congressman Murphy next and talked more about our bill and about the continued support for it and what was next. And it was, it was out of that discussion that it was determined we did, yes, have to have another hearing because it was a new bill and a new Congress. Saw Senator Budstaff, again, same thing, companion legislation, and we secured support for that. I will follow up with former Congressman McIntyre, who's our lobbyist, concerning the wheres and the whens and the details of how are we going to do this and when. Next page, please. This is the last meeting, this was a meeting that should have gone Monday, Senate Environment and Public Works Committee. Again, they're the ones, they're the committee of record for anything that goes in front of the Senate regarding our Cobra bill. So we talked about that, we talked about the dredging, talked about the Cobra zone sand. Next page, please. All right. Again, to brief on House Resolution one eight eight five, which is our Cobra removal bill in this current session of Congress, as I stated earlier, was introduced by Congressman Murphy, March fifth, co-sponsored by Congressman Rousier, referred to the House Committee on Natural Resources the same day, and we'll have, we'll have the hearing on May the twentieth. Next page, please. The next thing that will happen, that bill, is it'll have to go in front of something, it'll have to, something called CBO scoring Congressional Budget Office. What that is, is that they'll do an analysis to see what it's going to cost the taxpayers if we were, if they were to approve our bill and it were to become law. And basically, what it will cost taxpayers based on the scoring that was done on the bill that didn't get any further last session is it won't cost them anything. And it won't cost them anything because we're a donor community to the National Flood Insurance Program. We place, we spend more money in premiums to the NFIP than we receive back in claims. So it's a win for everybody, for us to be able to expand the footprint of North Topsail Beach within the National Flood Insurance Program. Our homeowners get reduced insurance rates for their flood insurance. The program itself gets, gets more money, and we don't end up taking out more money than we put in. Okay, after that, it'll go to the House floor possibly as part of a larger Cobra bill, or it may be a standalone. And then again, we're working on the companion Senate bill. Next page, please. How can you help as a homeowner? Write to your senators, write to your members of Congress, and this is especially true for those of us, those property owners in our town who are absentee maybe from. for those of us, those property owners in our town who are absentee, maybe from another state, because if you're writing to your senator or congressman from another state to get support of that, this thing's going to ultimately, these bills are only going to come to a vote, and we need their help. Next page. All right, that opens it to questions. Questions from the board?
No, I appreciate you both going up again this year.
Okay.
And I don't know how many years you're going to have to go. Hopefully, this is it.
Hopefully, this is it.
Hopefully, so, thank you.
Can we open it to questions from the audience if there are any?
No, that should be during open forum.
Okay.
Which is coming up.
All right.
Okay. So, the next item is new business, and under both of these, what I'd like to do is, first, I'd like to thank Lisa Brown for her appointment that expired or is expiring on the planning board, and also Hannah McLeod and Scott Morse for their appointments on the Board of Adjustments that are expiring or expired. And what we need to do, from a board perspective, is direct the town manager to advertise these openings, so that folks, whoever's interested, can apply or reapply, and that we can consider it in an upcoming meeting for appointment.
Do we need a motion, or we can just do it by consensus?
You can do it by consensus to direct the manager to advertise that.
Everybody, okay, any, all right? Board consensus on that. And now is the open forum, so if anybody has signed up, we'll start with them, and then whoever else wants to come up and talk Cobra, that'd be fine.
Suzanne Vega?
Vane.
Vane.
Pretty handwriting, just can't read it.
Thank you to the board for allowing us to speak and ask questions and give you some insights. I'm glad I waited till the last, so I could get it all at one time. So, this is going to be like one of those fast, you know, quizzes, you know, that they do in school. Thank you. I'm from Topsail Dunes, as well as a semi-resident across the road, at 1921 New River Inlet Road. But Topsail Dunes thanks you so much for the excess sand that was put to save Building One. I tell everyone, everybody wanted more. The pool needs help, Building Three's in front of there needs help, but I said this was a Band-Aid to help us throughout the season, and we're looking forward to more restoration, you know, in the fall. Next is, where is the money coming from for the bike path? Who's paying for that? Where is that money coming from? What is the environmental impact for the bike path? I'm very concerned of running water across the roads, and I know some of the board has, when I've been here, has had a lot of questions to new builds and what type of impact this will have on our island. You take, you put more concrete, more asphalt, where's the water going to go? It's not going to seep in any. So, therefore, that's my concern. Where are all the crosswalk signals, like at Villa Caparina, there at Splash, which I think has stopped me a little bit, you know, to see it flashing, even though a lot of people don't even know it's there to mash. I said, whoa, there's a lot there, you're supposed to be mashing it. But I think education on that needs to be given as well, or a bigger sign that says, mash this button. But I would like to see some close to 1841, 1840. I don't know the area exactly, but right before, you know, the town's little public access there. I would really greatly appreciate a crosswalk there before that big curve. It is very, very dangerous, and I'm all about safety. Where are we with the speed limit? Just like the gentleman in the first open area, we give our concerns, we hear our concerns, and I'm sorry, I don't hear the answers. So, where are we with the speed limit that everyone discussed and was concerned about? I don't know where is that. And lastly, but most importantly, from me and many others, thank you to Mr. Leonard and everyone else who is working so hard, and Mr. Leonard, it's my understanding you've worked years on to helping us to alleviate some of the financial burdens of being in Cobra, that the insurance company will tell you won't pay a dime, but you're going to pay a bunch to have the right to enjoy Topsail Dunes, oh, Topsail Beach, North Topsail. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else on the line? Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Yes, Mark Barret from 246 Sandpiper Drive. I'd like to thank everybody for what you do, time, energy, and effort, and to follow up with what Tom has mentioned about writing your congressman. I don't know if it's possible, I know you guys know, every hurricane season when there's a storm, nobody has a hurricane pass. Everybody rushes up here last minute, or they don't get it, and then everybody's on Facebook, yada, yada. Is there a way that, you know, they had a petition for lowering the speed limit, they have a petition for this, they have a petition for that, is there a way we can come up with like a form that everybody signs, they can stop by here, sign their name, print a signature, so that we can have 200 or 300 people to send that up, instead of sending 200 or 300, where people aren't going to take the time, because they're going to go home, they're going to want to hit the beach, they're going to want to cook, and they're not going to take the time to write their congressman. So, to add to, help put more gunpowder to get some attention for this Cobra. So, that's just what I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, sir, come up, just state your name again and your address, please.
My name is Jeffrey Wells, it's 2000 New River Inlet Drive, Unit 3414. As to the gentleman just said, I have an extensive experience dealing with my state and US representatives. Writing is great, a lot of times, the paperwork gets lost in the shuffle, I've found that personally. I've taken times in the past to fly to DC. I've also taken trips to Raleigh to deal with state and state representatives and our stateside. There is that option as well, it's a three-hour ride, give or take, and I know it's a full-day trip for some people, but a lot of times, their aides will, if you knock on the door, will have plenty of time to sit down with you, discuss the matters with you, and they're more than happy to, face to face. I find that goes a lot farther, and it makes more of an impact with these people. They take it much more personally than a letter. So, I hope that that can contribute. I care for the safety in the community of this island as much as everyone else is a resident. Safety means more to me, I think, than most, coming from a background as an emergency medical technician and dedicating my life to saving people. I truly believe safety is paramount, and anything we can do to get our representatives to help, if you're willing to make the drive, or take a trip, or you're in that area, it goes a long way. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes, sir. If you could just state your name when you come up and your address, please.
And hit the button.
And hit the button.
I'm Dean Haldeman, 2294, for the last 43 years, so I'm a newbie in town. I'm concerned about the upcoming hearing associated with bicycle lanes, and it's specifically for the five-mile stretch going up the island. It's a challenge as it is due to the lack of enforcement of the parking issues by the police department. The garbage collection would be another problem, twice a week during the summer particularly. The impact by, I'll say, the lack of enforcement of the parking regulations that the city has developed in conjunction with, I'll say, the planning board or whoever issued the building permits, they, there's an awful lot of the houses between, going up the island anyway, that have space for four cars. However, those four cars have to be back to back, and the last car, a lot of times, is significantly out in that
How much?
Area between the macadam and the actual road right away. The other thing, and I don't know if I mentioned it in the beginning, is the trash collection. Twice a week, you know, you go up there on a Wednesday or Saturday, and, you know, it looks like there's a bunch of drunks that have put the cans back or whatever, from the trash collection. And sometimes, it's where they replaced what was put out. But, and, you know, some places, the trash never really gets out, it's left right where it's stored all, like the city up at the beach access, you know, it's never moved, it sets there all week, and I see it every morning, or twice a day, when I get a cup of coffee and look out, and there the trash can is, it's not moved back off the way everybody else is supposed to.
Okay, well, sir, if you could just summarize, because we're running out of your three minutes. Anything else you?
I couldn't hear what?
Oh, you get three minutes to talk, and you're over the three? So, I was just saying, if you want to finalize with any last item?
Well, thank you very much. The only other thing I'd say is, you ought to be utilizing your electric sign to educate the weekly or bi-weekly visitors on the island.
Yes, sir.
You go up and down the beach, and you mention something to somebody, and say, well, I didn't know that.
Yep, we do that, we will be starting that up shortly, but I appreciate it.
Advertising t-shirts and hats and paying municipal employees to sell them is pretty inefficient, I think.
Well, thank you, sir, I appreciate your time. Anybody else? Okay.
Can I just respond to his statement about advertising information for the public?
No, it's for people to be able to speak to the board, it's not for communication back and forth.
I was just going to offer a solution.
Well, you can offline, outside with him. Okay, so, we are on the attorney's report.
Nothing to report.
Okay, then we're going to start with the mayor's report. I just want to thank everybody for coming today. We've had quite a few folks in the audience, and we've had some good questions, and some of them have already been answered. And the one thing I would suggest, if folks do have questions, they either contact a board member or contact Town Hall, because that really is the best place to get your information. I know you're going to be surprised, but social media does not always have the most accurate or up-to-date information. We do have, I was just a couple of things I wanted to make sure is clear. For the bike path, because I know, we've been talking about that as a board for, since Fred, so a couple of years now, where we've been trying to work with the DOT to see what our options are. Right now, they, the request has been given to Kama to see what we can do. We, as a board, right now, don't know what we can do. They might come back and say, since you're in the area of environmental concern, as Mr. Ian had mentioned, you can't do anything. They might say, you can go to the fishing pier. They might say, you can go to the end. We don't know yet, so we're not even at a spot as a board where we can make that decision, but certainly, we do worry about public safety, so if there's a way to get people off of the main road, we would like to do that. Also, the crosswalks, we do have budget items, we have budget dollars associated with the crosswalks. Villa Capriani was the first one to go in, and I agree with you, ma'am, if somebody could just hit the button, I would be happy. So, they may not all be that fancy, but some of them may just be striped lines with signs, but there are funds in the budget, we have been listening to that. And as far as the speed limit, I have corresponded with the folks in Osprey who've asked about that again, and the board decided to take no action on that. So, there was no action taken by the board to reduce the speed limit. So, I just wanted to just put that out there as well, because it doesn't sound like everybody's heard that final one. And just thank you for coming, thank you for listening through our budget discussions, I appreciate people being interested and involved. And if you have any questions, again, please, please reach out to one of our board members. Okay, Ms. Pladdell?
Thank everybody for coming, and again, I'm very happy about the budget not raising taxes. I'm sure everybody else is happy about that as well. This is, we're right into turtle nesting season now. Turtle nesting season began May 1st. We don't have any nests yet, but you may see areas that look like they're a nest, they are not. They are control areas, they are control areas for data loggers, which take the sand temperature. We have, we have six of them in our section of the town right now. So, also remember to turn off your oceanfront lights or purchase some turtle-friendly lighting, which we just conveniently happen to have for sale here at the Town Hall. Also, fill in your beach holes, don't leave your stuff out on the beach. And have a great Memorial Day weekend, which will be coming up before you know it.
Oh, Memorial.
And Mother's Day.
I thought you meant Mother's Day, sorry. Alderman Benson?
Thank you, ma'am. Yep, I would echo what Connie just said about turtle season. I wanted to really, and also the budget, this is what, I think, our second year, we have not even began to talk about a tax raise. We've been able to meet our needs here with the current level of revenue that's coming in, so that's pretty good news for property owners. I'd like to thank our delegates that went to Washington, particularly Alderman Leonard and the town major, and particularly Alderman Leonard, for all the work that you've done on the Cobra over these years. It's not just been a one-off thing, he has been working on this for a dozen years or more. It's an injustice that should never have happened, and he's done so much to try to correct it. So, seems like we're almost at the point where we're finally going to get Congress to take the appropriate action. And finally, as I believe I heard somewhere this week, this is Hurricane Preparance Week, and I'd just like to remind you of that, and the town website has excellent information on hurricane preparedness. I assume most of you in the room who live here have your reentry pass, but just a reminder, if you don't, please come to Town Hall and get your reentry pass. Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Protem, Leonard?
I've already talked enough today. I appreciate everybody coming out, I appreciate all the hard work that was done from manager and everyone on the budget. Looking at that budget, as it was presented, and I've been doing that now for going on 10 years or so, it was probably the best, the best presented budget we've had. It was really well done. As Connie said, no new taxes, no tax increase, we have a healthy fund balance that we'll probably need someday for storm repair, but hopefully not this year. Kudos to the manager for the DC trip, filling in the blanks, keep me, keep me straight on what the message was. We'll be leaving today. There are three of us here, plus Larry Strutter from Bisac, who are going to the North Carolina Beach Inlet and Waterway Association Spring Conference, leaving today through Friday. And hopefully, when I get back this year on Friday, I won't arrive back home to my wife holding a three-week-old kitten like I did last year. That concludes my brief.
Alderman Olszewski?
Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. Enjoy the weekend. Hopefully, wherever you are, you have great weather, and hopefully, we have great weather this weekend. I do want to thank the firm that's working with us on our accounting work. I know it's not easy to jump in and figure things out, so I want to appreciate your work on that. And we do know we have challenges in that area, and we're going to continue to work on those, so thank you.
Alderman Grant?
I do push the crosswalk button, because I love seeing the flashing lights every time we go there. I think it's hysterical, and it's like, and people do stop when you put the flashing stuff up. I just love that. At the county meeting, I go to the county meetings, and I'm on the Anwasa Board. The county meeting, Roy Spennett brought up that they had done CPR training and Narcan training. Is that something, apparently, we can get that for free to have them come down here? Is that something we want to consider as some kind of training thing? Because apparently, they, they offer that for people to come down, so it's something we ought to consider. On the water stuff, got a tour. If you remember, up to 10 here, there was the old Pluris office, which is now Anwasa. Behind that is, believe it or not, 300 acres of land back there, and they've got a project that they're starting. They're calling it the North Toppsil Sewer System. They're talking about doubling the capacity of that sewer system because of all the growth that we've got going forward. Something Mike just said, he said, you know, Tom's been working on this for 12 years. I think he, I don't think he meant that as, it's like, when you deal with the federal government, every year is a new year, and you're, you're starting over from ground zero, especially depending when you got to split Congress or you've got something else. Other than that, like I said, we've made a lot of progress. And also, keep in mind, one of the things that the board's focusing on, they talked about no taxes, is it's not just hurricanes. We've made the commitment to rebuild the beaches, which we've started. We've got a firehouse going up, those type of things, things that have to be done going forward. And as everybody in this room knows, the more you wait, the longer you wait, the more it's going to cost. And we're trying to get ahead of that, and that's why we've got a capital budget, which we've never had before. We're putting more money. Somebody had asked where a lot of the revenue is going. If you look at the budget, you'll see a lot of it's going into the beach. We've got two more payments, Deborah, for the Phase 5 thing, one this year and one next year, and that'll be, that'll free up $2 million a year in the beach fund to be put back into the beach. So with that, thanks to everybody for coming.
So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into closed session to consult with the town attorney for NC General Statute 143-318.11A.
So moved.
Do I have a second? I want favor.
Aye.
I'd like to request a motion to come out of closed session.
Motion, go ahead Connie.
Motion to come out of closed session. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to report that no action was taken in closed session and I'd like to request a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just for the record everybody.